I'd like to welcome you all here tonight. We're just a couple of minutes away from beginning our meeting. Before we start, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge and then, I'm sorry, Rick Evans will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to thank all the citizens who have been here today, to pray this time of the season, that all the people bless our city and bless all their causes and all the people living now, and pray that people can do what is right for the city and help them to build more buildings now, especially if there's a situation where they don't want to.
Amen.
Thank you, Rick.
About three hours.
All right, we do have, Chief Peters, do you have the large print copies that are right up there by Wyman? If anyone would like to have a large print edition of the agenda, feel free to go get one of those. And that said, I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the Tuesday, December 10th, 2019 regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. I'm going to ask our city clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Amelia Williams.
Here.
Then Mike Overton.
Here.
Colby Fulfer.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rick Evans.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Kathy J. Cox.
Here.
Ernest Cate.
Thank you. Before we go any further and move into our comments portion of the meeting, you have a resolution, a hard copy of a resolution before you authorizing the payment of an invoice. This again is a, it's a, is a bond purchase that has been approved, but it, we do have the requirement that anything, any single bill exceeding $1 million be brought to the city council. And we just got this invoice yesterday, so I asked Wyman to go ahead and prepare it and we would ask you all to put it on the agenda tonight. We could put it on as item 16A. So I would entertain that motion.
So moved.
A motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
J. Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
By a vote of seven, zero.
All right, thank you. We're at item four on the agenda. This is the portion of each regular meeting that the city council sets aside to hear comments from our residents. If we have citizens that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come forward at this time to the microphone. We ask that you please keep your comments brief, clearly state your name and address. And again, this is a time set aside for items that are not already on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will move on to item five. I'm going to ask Ashley to come and we're going to present our certificates to our youth council members that are here tonight.
Hi, okay, my name is Ashley Earhart and I'm the coordinator for the Springdale Youth Council. This year, we had 11 students complete the program and tonight, they're going to be recognized for their hard work. So I'm going to call their names, the ones that are here to receive their certificates, and then I will call the names of those who are not able to make it due to school functions.
Okay, do they have, they're going to come up, get their certificate?
Yep.
And then they're going to go and greet each of you all, okay?
Yep. So Chandler Cartwright. Anna Claire Hay. Gavin Litchford. And Angela Minjbar. And then those students who are unable to be here tonight are Casey Hawes, John Paul Hignight, Madison Sparks, Nyrell Trevino.
Congratulations.
Elliot Wessels, and Emily Wilson.
I'd like to thank each of you for participating in that program. Ashley, thank you for your leadership in that. I know it's, it's a lot of work and we appreciate your commitment to that. Item six, we have a group here from Young Elementary, third grade presentation, and Chrissy Powell is here to kick that off. Chrissy, good to see you all tonight.
Okay, this is going to be short, but our third graders-
Did your husband tell you to keep it short?
No. I've been to some of these, so I know to keep it short. But no, we've been studying city government at Bernice Young Elementary and we've been studying about local government and how the officials get elected and what it appears, what they want to do is see exactly, actually how it worked. And so we went to the website and saw all your pictures and they were like, "There's women on there." So they were really funny about that. But I'm going to introduce them and then they're going to come up and we're going to get a picture and then I've got a couple that are going to have a few words to say.
Okay.
Okay, I would like for Madison Lamandola. And then Brecken Jones. Okay, I'm going to let Madison and Brecken share something real quick.
Hi, my name is Madison Lamandola and I am a third grade student at Bernice Young Elementary. We have been studying about city government and wanted to come and see what a city council meeting looks like.
Hi, my name is Brecken Jones and I am also a third grader student at Bernice Young Elementary. We want to thank our mayor and the city council for making the best choices for Springdale. Keep up the great work.
Applause.
And then now I'm going to call the rest of them up to get a picture. So Brecken and Madison, y'all go stand on that gold plate right there. Now we have Hannah Ward. James McMullin. Samara Prasatio. John Chakanawa. And Grace Chakanaka. Christian Al Maraz. Aubrey Sullivan. And Addison Hudson. And so these are our third graders from Bernice Young Elementary.
Thank you all very much.
Mayor, before we move on to item seven, especially while the kids are still here, I know usually council member comments are at the end, but I just thought it'd be appropriate to maybe say something to honor Officer Carr. We, you know, scriptures tell us that there's no greater love hath no man than this and he laid down his life for his friends. And Officer Carr, although he wasn't friends with every one of us, he still put his life in harm's way for every citizen in Fayetteville. And some of the, our officers are some of the most selfless people on this planet willing to put their life on the line. And one of the most selfless individuals in Fayetteville encountered one of the most selfish acts and that is one of the most hard things to wrap our mind around. And he sacrificed his life for Fayetteville and I know that our officers do the same thing and I just wanted to bring honor to his name tonight, especially while the kids are still here and they understand the importance that we honor our officers and respect that brotherhood and we appreciate all of our officers who are here tonight as well.
Thank you, Colby. Appreciate you doing that. And services, if you haven't, if you don't know, services are Thursday afternoon at Barn Hill Arena. And I know our police department, Chief Peters, has been in touch with Chief Reynolds and obviously we've offered any assistance or help that we can give them. I've talked with Mayor Jordan and they appreciate very much everyone reaching out and just know that, that we're praying for them and continue to lift up the family and not only the fam, Officer Carr's family, but the friends, the city. And this is a, this is a very difficult thing to go through and, and we want to be there and I know we want to support them any way we can and we'll continue to do that. So, Colby, thanks for bringing that up. All right. Approval of minutes. You had an opportunity to look over those. Hopefully if there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Procedural motions, what's your pleasure, council?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for options A and B. Roll call, please.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
J. Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item nine, Planning Commission Report and Recommendation. Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
The first item on the agenda is a resolution to discuss a waiver of street improvements, curb gutter and sidewalks and especially sidewalks in connection with this project. They are building a single-family home on this lot. They're bringing in a park home and a RV storied area. It has enough area for all that to take place. They are asking a waiver of that. Planning Commission recommends that approval of this waiver of the sidewalk and the street improvements. The title of the resolution reads, "A Resolution Approving a Waiver of Street Improvements, Drainage, Curbs, Gutters and Sidewalks Set forth in Ordinance Number 3725 to Bob Bonds in Connection with 8332 East Wagon Wheel Road, a Single Family Dwelling with Option One."
The resolution passed with option one.
Motion and a second to approve the resolution with option one. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the audience need to speak to this item? Okay, Denise?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
J. Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Carry seven, zero.
The next request is for a conditional use for a U.S. Unit 28, which is a home occupation in a single-family residential structure located at 5544 Peyton Place. This is an embroidery business that's going to go in this location. Planning Commission recommends approval of the conditional use with the following conditions: No alterations of the outside appearance of the residential structure; provision of a separate outside entrance for the business areas of the residential structure; no outside storage of materials required for the operation of the business, operated only by the resident members of the household and shall not have any employees, consensuaries, or any other form of operator or helper, whereas such business conducted on the premises or off the premises requires the use of an area no greater than 30% of total heated living space of the residential structure; generates no traffic parking and sewage or water used in excess of what is normal in the residential neighborhood; will not produce fumes, odors, noise, or any other offensive effects that are not normal to residential activity; will not include, involve accessory buildings; stock and trade will not exceed 10% of the floor area of accessory use; will not require the construction of a duplicate kitchen or the condition, addition to the existing kitchen will not require or cause the consumption of any food products produced thereon. The title of the resolution reads, "A Resolution Approving a Conditional Use at 5544 Peyton Place Set forth in Ordinance Number 4030."
Resolution, I'm sorry.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Anyone in the audience? Kay Denise?
Evans.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
J. Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
The next item is another request for a conditional use for U.S. Unit 28, home occupation in a single-family home in a medium-density multifamily residential district MF12. This will be for a clock repair business. Planning Commission-
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Clock repair?
Clock repair.
Yes. Planning Commission recommends approval with the following conditions. And it's the same ones I just read on the last one and I can read them all again if you want me to, but it's the very same one included in this resolution as in the other.
Just curious, not that it matters, but is that the same clock repair business that's been there forever?
It is.
Same building?
It was closed down, it was closed down for a while and they had to open it back up.
Okay.
And that's why we're here.
Okay.
Clock repair business is not really something that automatically becomes a home occupation. They appealed my decision, Planning Commission approved it to be a conditional use. They applied for the conditional use and that's where we are. And if we're not good, I'm not going to read that, those 10 items again, they're the very same ones.
Can we just, Senator, acknowledge that we all agree that those are the conditions?
Okay. And the title of the resolution reads, "A Resolution Approving a Conditional Use at 321 Cottle Avenue Set forth in Ordinance Number 4030."
Resolution pass.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Kay Denise?
Powell.
Yes.
J. Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Carry seven, zero.
The next item is a request to rezonate 39.54 acres located on Hilton Road owned by Hilton Real Estate LLC. The request is to rezonate the property from low-density, single-family residential SF2 to low-medium-density multifamily residential district MF4. The Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval of the zoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, on the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from low-medium-density, single-family residential district SF2 to low-medium-density, multifamily residential district MF4 and declaring an emergency."
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any further comments or questions from the council before we open it up?
I do, what does the planning map show for zoning in that area? Isn't that single-family?
It shows it as low-density and what they're-
Single-family?
Well, it shows low-density. We don't show single-family as opposed to multifamily. It's the density issue and this is four units per acre.
MF4 is still low-density.
Well, it's eight units per acre. It's on the medium side of, it's low to medium.
And there's single-family homes directly across and all around Charlie George Park, correct?
It does border the park on the north side as opposed to the other properties.
Okay, other questions? Anyone in the audience want to speak to this one? Sure, we've probably got several and that's fine. We'll hear all you all want to say, but just, just try and be respectful of each other and the time and don't get, if you start getting real repetitive or somebody has already said what you need to say, then back off and let, you know, we don't need to hear the same thing over and over. So that's all I'm saying. So anyone who wants to speak, feel free to come on up. Again, start, please start by naming, giving us your name and address.
My name is Robert Geringer. Live at 3874 Butterfly Avenue. Two west of this property. Can you see Butterfly? If you come south of the Hilton Road sign and the first road to the left, that is Butterfly Avenue coming off of Hilton that runs all the way to Butterfield Coach Road. Our subdivision, we have-
Is that newest, is that that newest?
That's completed, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. We've lived there 14 months. It was completed approximately six months ago with the last house.
Right.
There is, I'm extremely concerned about it dropping from SF2 to MF4, just to bring down the, we already have a lot of crime in the area because as policemen told us at our neighborhood meeting, watch meeting, that we're just on the edge of town and it's easy in, easy out. It's been multiple homes broken into, cars stolen, dog run over with $15,000 worth of work on it and a major car wreck at the top of Butterfield Coach and just inside of Butterfield Coach and Butterfly because it's become a cut-through for everybody coming down Hilton from schools, from the park, to hit Joyce Street. So with this being zoned and the park is very nice, but it's, it's wonderful, it's a wonderful park. We just so concerned about this being, I would say, downgraded to multifamily living. That could be apartments, I assume, to fourplexes anywhere in that area is the definition I
I'm sorry.
No problem. I'm going to jump to one specific thing that I'm concerned about. There's a new subdivision being worked on now on the south end of us that will connect, I've been told, to Hilton. Right now, it's a gravel road. I hope whenever that's done, that that gravel road will be paved and gutted on up into Hilton, the 300 yards it may be. It's in two phases. The first phase is underway. A concern I have is all of their water, all their flooding from their flood zone is coming out over into ours. I live on the north side of Butterfly, just past 3802 on the map and people north of us, just six houses, the heavy rains we've had, there's water in their backyard. I don't know if anybody's ever walked that, that, someone here should have, to approve that water that's going to flow now into our flood zone area. But that flood zone area, I've walked it four or five times. The water is flowing, you would think downhill, but the water's flowing from that proposed land into the Butterfield area. So we're going to be a collection for that unless this is changed and I don't know why it would be taken out further to the country, but that's going to add more water. The new south is going to add more water. They built a huge collection pond, maybe a second, but once it gets up two feet, it's flooding right on underneath. I've watched it being constructed. That walkway floods in and then they've got a big rock containment for when it gets, just to hold water coming this way to the, to the east and water coming in from the west from that property. And then once it gets over that, it's going to flood the houses to the north and to the south side of Butterfield or on the, on that drainage area. So now my third issue is that water's got to be really checked on or everybody on the north side of Butterfield's going to have an issue or Butterfly.
Brad, that would be part of the, that would come, if this were rezoned.
Yes, sir.
That would come later as part of the development plans and they would be required, the developer would be required to take care of the water, not make it any worse than it is right now today. That's, that's the minimum. Okay. So as far as a rezoning, which I guess we're hearing tonight, I mean, that, it's true that, you know, that you're making the point that, that more people or more structures or more, more living units increase the need for mitigation of the water.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Point taken, yeah.
I'll, I'll leave it for others. There's more to address, but I want to thank you all for your service and your time. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
My name is Josh Zuber at 3496 Butterfly Avenue. I would be further to the west. So I have two main concerns. Agreeing with previous statements, infrastructure is, is a major concern for me, but more so. I was relocated here for work as many people who live in that subdivision were. One reason we chose Springdale and this location was the single-family zoning of the area. And the homes are an investment and so this will affect greatly 96, I believe it's 96 homes, that investment. I am concerned about home valuation going down. It's a given from what I've seen. It's a given that home valuation will decrease and that's not why I moved to Springdale. I had, I had choices, I mean, I could have moved anywhere. I didn't have to live in Springdale. I could have lived in Fayetteville, could have lived in Centerton, I could have lived anywhere. My job would allow that, but we chose this area because of location and the home value. We felt like it was a good investment for us because it may be a short-term stay for me. I want, I love Springdale. We've loved it for the year that we've been here and we want to stay, but just in case it's not, I do want returns on that investment. I didn't buy that house to lose money. So that is a major concern for me. Safety is also a huge concern. The, we have Springdale police officers who live in the neighborhood, but it is not patrolled or enforced with traffic safety. It's, it's awful. I'm just going to put it that way. We can't put speed bumps in. We can't stop people from speeding through the neighborhood. We don't even let our kids play in the front yard. That's how bad it's gotten. Our dog, we actually had a dog come through the front door just last night and got to the sidewalk and someone cutting through, there was a UPS truck parked across the street making a delivery, someone cutting through was going 40, 40-plus when they stopped. They slid, skid, squealed the tires, barely, I mean, our dog stopped, they stopped it. It worked out, but that could have been much different. That could have been a kid. That could have been my kid, that could have been my neighbor's kid. So that is a huge concern with this as well because it's a bad cut-through now. I don't know how many multifamily units you can put on 39 acres, but I'm in construction so I can, I can get pretty close. It's going to be a lot of new traffic. So this is a major concern for me. So I'll leave it to my neighbors.
My name is Roger Preby. I live at 3972 Butterfly. We live down the west-east part of the city, down near where the subdivision is proposed. I love the area, I really do. I love, I have backup to Clear Creek. I know that the, I've got it on the one map for the, I put in the, oh, I haven't showed you that yet. Okay, the development itself.
Okay, now we have traffic problems. We've got several problems going on here. Number one, there is no east or west route other than Don Tyson Parkway. All right, so that everybody that comes out of that, everybody that comes out of that subdivision, if they're, you know, most people work in either Springdale or Fayetteville. And so if you're going to head north into Springdale, well, your best choice is you're going to go up Butterfield Coach Road, you know? All right? That's a straight shot right through our, right through our subdivision there. All right? So all the north traffic is going to go that way. Now, if you work in Fayetteville, you're going to head south. All right? Same thing, though. You take a straight out of there into our subdivision and then down to Fayetteville. Joyce Road meets down there. Okay? What I'm proposing is, a lot of us don't want to have the multiple home, multiple zoning homes. So what I'm proposing, we break this into two phases. We do phase one and approve it for single-family. That would be just those two streets at the beginning of this. That way, all Butterfly, all of Butterfly Avenue would just be single-family homes and the rest- homes, and the rest, they could go ahead and do with what they want later, if you solve the traffic problem. As you can see on this map, here's the city limits for Springdale, this is the county, and then this is Fayetteville here. So what I'm proposing is that at the end of Highland Avenue, we start a new road here, bring it across over, and it would go all the way over to Crossover Street, and that would take care of the east, west, and the south traffic. Everybody could leave at the end of, um, Hilton Street, and then just be able to get out and go down to Fayetteville. Now, the only problem would, would be if they were headed north, well, they could come up through there, but if the bulk of them are down here, then they could use this road to come up and go in, north on that street. The real problem, and we don't have any western route at all either, so what I'm saying is, um, we do Fa- we approve Phase One as, as, as they've got it in their plans right now for these two streets, just these two right here, a single-family, and then after, you guys have to annex these areas and stuff like that, and work with the counties, and work with the, um, Fayetteville and Springdale, all three together, in order to build this road here. And I think that would improve a lot of the traffic flow into, into our property and stuff. Um, other than that, I don't know, would you have any questions of me? I don't wanna take up everybody's time here, so.
Someone said another road is planned, another east-west between, uh, between Hilton and Butterfield Coach. Did I hear that right? Further south?
No, there's not, that I know of, there isn't.
Somebody, what was that gravel road? You said that. Would you mind, I'm sorry to, would, would you mind? We wanna get you on TV.
Okay.
I want everybody sa- everybody to hear.
Thank you. Robert Geringer, um, so if you go up to Butterfly from, up, up west Butterfly to Butterfield Coach, take a left heading south, there's gonna be a whole new street cut through in two phases, and it's my understanding is Phase One will be completed first, then Phase Two will cut through all the way to Hilton. At the bottom of that map, you can see that last house on the south, 4556, that's the farmer that owns the farm behind that to the, and, uh, he told me he's gonna keep that gravel, but if we got a road coming all the way through, I would think the city would, would pave that. Um, anyway, did I answer your question?
It may not, yes, yes, you did, thank you.
May I address one more thing quickly while I'm here? If everybody'll look at number 4497, south of the field, there's a road that goes in there. I wish somebody could take a look at that property. I think a lot of our problems are coming out of there. Uh, it, it looks like things need to be torched, honestly. Uh, houses have trash, looks like a junk pile out in front of them. They're sitting in floodplains, uh, they've got a pack of dogs that run loose into our neighborhood all the time. That's just something that I think to clean up Springdale, that would be a huge help.
Is it in Springdale?
Well, I don't know. It's just due south of that property.
I see a dotted line there, looks like a, a boundary line.
He's talking about curved road, maybe. Is it curved?
Yes, that curved, that curved road. It's coming off of Hilton and going west, and there's about five mailboxes there, and it, it's a, it's a dirt road going up in there, and, and that all floods every time we get heavy rains. So it's, it's homes that have been there 100 years, probably, and on the backside, about where that 4497 is, is even a, a little bitty, I called a trailer house, it's probably only 40 feet long, and a truck sitting up there, so it just, there's some traffic going in and out of there, so I, I.
It's in the county.
It may be a, yeah, they shoot guns out there every day. It's, so there's nothing we can do about that, I guess. All right, thank you.
Hi, Mayor and Council members. My name is Stacy Greenwood, and my address is 3544 Butterfly Avenue. Uh, my family moved me to Springdale in 1974 because this new school was being built with the innovative way of teaching, John Tyson Elementary School. Ever since then, I've been a tried-and-true Springdale girl. I've went to school with several people in this room, including one of our council members. I moved away for several years and returned. I chose Springdale, Arkansas as my forever home. When I purchased my home about a year and a half ago, uh, it's, it's my home, it's my dream home. I know a lot of people talked about safety, which is a huge concern in traffic. I don't know anything about city planning, so I don't know when our neighborhood was built, if residential streets are considered through streets. If not, maybe there's a solution, maybe, is there needs to be, I think, all types of housing for all kinds of people, and maybe the solution is that the developer pay to gate our community, or we put in speed tables. I don't exactly know what the answer is, but surely there has to be a really good compromise. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Someone else?
Um, I was wondering, what is an F4 low-density house? That's, they want, there was probably F2 zone, now they wanna change it down to an F4 low-density?
It was S2.
Whatever it is.
And it's.
S2, okay.
And it's being changed, uh, being asked, requested to be changed to multi, MF4.
Okay, so what am I looking at, a duplex houses or apartments or?
Could be fourplexes, that would be the maximum, I think.
So it could be fourplexes, so it won't be apartments?
It depends on what you call, no, it wouldn't be what, what you're thinking of as apartments.
We think it was apartments, okay. Um, basically, what all of us are saying is, we have, I, you know, we have 92, 96 houses. We seem like a very small subdivision to me. We have two main roads, Stonehenge and Butterfly, and two crossroads, and that's it, it's very small. Most everybody in subdivision is either retired or have kids. You see a lot of people jogging with their kids in strollers. It's very family, and most, everybody else has a dog, too. Almost all of us own a dog, too, so you see a lot of people around. You will not see any children playing in the front yard hardly ever, because all of us think it's very dangerous, okay? Our neighbor was the dog that got hit, the dog got hit, and the car, the truck, the refuge truck flew by and didn't even stop and hit the dog. So that's a problem for all of us. The drainage is, as my husband said, the drainage is a problem. Behind us is all where that creek is, it flows the opposite way you think you should go, and there's a wall there, so we'll stop. They're building a whole new, uh, phase of Grand Valley Meadows right behind us, um, Phase Two and Phase Three, that's all being drained to the creek also. So that, and that, right, right now, I think Butterfly on my side, which is, I guess, the, um, north side, we don't flood, but everybody else, almost in the neighborhood, I know, has flood problems in their backyards. Some even goes up to the patio doors, okay? Well, my neighbor, so that's a big issue, that we'd like the builders to think about when they're building houses in floodplains. Um, but basically, we just want a safe neighborhood without all this traffic going on, that's the main thing, and right now, on the other side of the park, I go to the park a lot, uh, either just with my dog or whatever, and the other side of the park from us, and you can see now from the park, they're building duplexes and smaller homes from us, so that, and those would be a lot of rentals, so that's gonna bring our property down, as Joshua said earlier, and then if you go from our house and get on Don Tyson, right there to the right, is all smaller inexpensive homes of that Don Tyson, Tyson Heights, he's been in two phases of those, all less properties, so everything around us, to me, is a lower, that's right immediately around us, is a lower expensive house. So, um, we're just concerned about the fourplexes. A lot of times when people buy duplexes, we've lived in one, no, nobody, they eventually get rented out, and people just don't take care of them as much. So when they build something, we'd like them really think about it. Our homes run maybe, I don't know exactly what now, maybe 230, 240, to 270, so I would like that to be considered when they're building something across the street from us, of quality and construction, that's gonna be the same value, hopefully, or something, whatever they're gonna do, it's gonna be the same value and upkeeping. I don't want anything built there, I hate to see anything built there, but I know they probably will, know what, what you're saying, but I hope they really think about what they're doing and think about our street and our subdivision. I don't think any subdivision should be a cut-through. That should be, never happen, I don't think, 'cause there's families and kids that live there, and there's too much, too much dangerous to people. I yell at the cars all the time. My husband tells me, "Stop yelling, one day you're gonna be shot." But I said, "Let them shoot me," I said, and then I'll get, go climb in the car with them, I'll go after them, basically, 'cause I'm get so frustrated with them flying through their subdivision, I'm just 60, 70 miles an hour, okay? But nobody's doing anything about it. So again, we complain, we've said things, but, you know, nothing's happened, basically. So really consider what you're putting there, and for our sakes, and for our family's sakes, and our kids, and babies and everything, 'cause, um, I think it should be really considered, what, how, where everything's put, and where it's put, and how it's put, and the value of it also. Thank you.
My name is, my name is Aubrey Sullivan, and, um, I think they shouldn't build it there because, um, there's soccer fields, and then, like, if you go, like, when the people, some of your kids go to soccer, they could, like, break into your houses when you don't know it, and there might be, not be some people next to you that are not home and they can't see it.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Carol Smith. Doug's my cousin, disclaimer. And I live on Butterfly Avenue.
Why are you disclaiming?
I know. Sorry.
They won't hold that against you.
I just wanted to ask one thing. Uh, when, when it was put out for the agenda, it's put on there as an emergency from the Planning Commission, and what does that mean?
Usually means that there's a development, there's a proposed plan, and they're ready to start. Am I correct, Patsy? Is that why this?
Yeah, it's, it's not the Planning Commission declaring it an emergency, it's the developer or the applicant that asked for us to go ahead and take action on it because they have a pending sale of the property.
Well, I, I didn't hear what you said.
The developer or property owner has a pending action they wanna do on it, that's what they asked for an emergency.
Yeah, Carol, it's still up to, I mean, the council, it, if, when they pass an ordinance, if they pass it, then they determine whether or not to add an emergency clause. It just speeds up the process if, if they, if they do, but they don't always. That's just an option when, with an ordinance. Thank you.
Patsy, I have a question. We have designs, I'm sorry, I didn't know there were other, I apologize.
It's okay. You can go ahead, Kathy.
Are the design standards included in MF4? Are they allowed anymore?
No, they're not, they were never included in MF4.
I'm just asking for these folks' sake.
It's apartment complexes only, which is anything above a fourplex.
Hi, my name's Steve Fedorko, 4048 Butterfly Avenue. I'm the second house up on Butterfly, across the street from the proposed development. I don't wanna beat a dead horse here, but you, I think you're starting to get the gist of the concerns of our neighborhood, traffic, property values, among the two biggest ones, crime would be another, but I had a few other, um, a few other comments. Um, it was this emergency business, I'm reading from the, uh, agenda, and it says, um, it should be rezoned, and that unless granted, citizens of Springdale will suffer irreparable harm and damage, and will be substantially deprived of the use of their property. I'm a citizen of Springdale, I'm not seeing how I'm gonna be irreparably harmed. The second part of the emergency clause, it says, "It is hereby declared that an emergency exists, and this ordinance being necessary for the preservation of the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Springdale, Arkansas, shall be in effect immediately upon passage and approval." You alluded to the fact that you can add this emergency clause. It sounds like a disaster's ready to happen unless this thing is passed.
I'm gonna let the, I'm gonna let the, thank, that's a good, I'm glad you brought that up. I'm gonna let the city attorney address that it's been our practice when there's pending, uh, a pending sale or, or development that, that needs to be able to move a little quicker, that we add, we, the council will sometimes add an emergency clause, and, and they always state why they are adding the emergency clause, but I, I want Ernest to address exactly what it does. I think, I think we're, we're concerned about something that, that's really in, in the grand scheme of things, really doesn't make a difference.
Right. I, I kinda got what you're saying about declaring an emergency gets things moving faster, but, um, I thought maybe the emergency was, uh, a housing shortage in Springdale, or something of that nature, because I did a quick Zillow search, and there's hundreds of properties for sale at or below our price point, so I'm not sure that's what the emergency was, so I'm not clear on that. Um, anyway, is Springdale prepared to handle the influx of people in the schools? I don't know if that's been considered. Maybe there's capacity, I'm not sure. Um, we talked about crime, property values, the big one was traffic flow. Now, as other people reiterated, Springdale is my home. I came from Oregon. I retired after serving in government for 30 years in Oregon, and I did a search all over the country, and the best place to live, and guess what showed up? Northwest Arkansas. Came here, I bought a house in a new division, so I can't be opposed to development, I'd be a hypocrite, 'cause it's gonna happen, but let's be consistent with the development. We have nice homes in that neighborhood, we'd like to keep them that way, so a reasonable solution would be to allow single-family dwellings in that, uh, development, not multifamily. It seems inconsistent with the entire rest of the neighborhood all over the city. There seems to be other lots that may be better suited for multifamily dwellings than this one. Not opposed to development, it's gonna happen, that's inevitable, and, you know, it's a growing area, northwest Arkansas, I read it's gonna be a million people by a certain year, 20, 30, or somewhere along that. Uh, I'm all for that, but consistency here, it just seems out of place. I don't know if you've ever gone to this site, it's a beautiful little area, got great views, excellent park, real nice neighborhoods, and this would diminish the quality of life. It would do irreparable harm to myself and my fellow neighbors here by building, by approving, uh, multifamily dwellings there. You're my counselor, by the way, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So anyway, um, we talked about how many units per lot up to four, how many lots, okay? Anyway, that's about it. I, I think you're gonna hear pretty much the same thing from everybody, but, uh, I know there's a lot of emotion. You can see by the turnout that this concerns our neighborhood and the citizens there, and we are citizens of Springdale, and, you know, we'd like to be, have a fair solution here, not to stifle everything, but, you know, reasonable, make it single-family dwellings of same consistency as the rest of the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make this quick. My name is Nick Charles, I live at 3928 Butterfly. I've lived in Springdale for about 12 years. My wife and I had a house in the north end of Springdale by Bay Area Elementary, and I lived there 10 years, and there was duplexes close to the area. They turn into rental properties, they go downhill, you can't tell me that they don't, they eventually do. We bought our house on Butterfly because I liked the area, it was nice houses, I figured it would stay that way. I don't mind single-family development coming in, I know that it's gonna happen, but I think duplexes would really affect my property value, for one, and it really concerns me. It's one reason I bought the house, so. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
My name is Violeta Rosales, and I live at 470 Butterfly, and I'm just gonna keep it short.
Well, I'm sorry, what was your first name?
Violeta Rosales.
Okay, thank you.
And basically, um, if I would've been there whenever I was choosing my house, I would've never bought my house. So something that, um, and I had, I had a concert today for my kid, and I said, "No, I can't go, 'cause we need our voices heard," and that's what really we want, just, we can't have that there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Developer here, by any chance, or they, does the developer have anything they would wanna say or add to this? Yeah, I think he's on his way, or, uh, developer or representative, I'm not sure.
I'm representing, uh, the Riggins boys. Yeah, a couple of things, the, with the floodplain in, in this, where actually, the, the plat that we submitted is actually, the density's only 3.8, because there's, there's some floodplain up there, and there's areas that we're not using. The only reason we're actually asking for the MF4 zoning, which is eight units per acre, and not the MF2, is the lot size, you know, the- and not the MF2, is the lot size, you know, the, the actual lot size. You know, so your density's actually gonna be less than four, which is, you know, about what a normal, single-family is. They are looking at doing duplexes. I don't know if you've been on Brooklyn Street over off of, by Harbor Meadows, Amelia's familiar with it, I know. There's like, like four or five duplexes in there that are all brick and that's what they're trying to do over there. You know, they, they're the same developer that's doing the one to the south, so the property, they're, they're just as worried about property values as, as everybody else or they're not gonna sell their single-family if they, if they do a poor duplex subdivision as well. So, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that y'all have. You know, I don't know, maybe if we did a MF2 zoning with a, with a variance on lot size, I don't know if that's even earnest possible or not.
We've done it before.
Can't do the variance yet. I mean, we'd be amenable to that if, if, if that would be more.
MF, MF2?
Yes, yes, which is four units an acre.
Brian, my question.
But MF2 is duplexes only and this body doesn't grant the variances for the lot size. That would have to be advertised, it would have to go to planning commission, they would have to make that decision, so if you're banking on that tonight, it can't happen all tonight, so.
Can't you do single-family on smaller lot sizes?
In an MF4, you can. In an MF2, you can only do duplexes. And it is a different lot size.
My question is going to be, how many, how much of this thirty-nine plus acres is planned to be single-family and how many are duplexes or multi, is it all MF4?
Well, they, they actually own seventy-six acres. It, it, the, the, the top forty would be the duplexes and then as you go down to the south, would end up being the single-family. So again.
Wait, this picture right there is how many acres?
That's, that's forty, that's thirty-nine acres. That's the only part that they're rezoning, the rest is all the, the single-family. So again, the developer's gonna drive through the, the multifamily to get to their own single-family, so they're not gonna do something that's going to hurt their property values.
But the west? What is going to be built along the west side?
Along?
Yes.
Along, I, with the, the front two, and we, we submitted a preliminary plat at the deal, you know, this four, this thirty-nine acres is, is planned to be duplexes. It's the thirty-nine, and then there's thirty-six more acres that, that goes to the southeast that will be single-family, does that make sense?
We haven't seen the platform for the, the thirty-nine acres as always seen. It had some issues that we weren't ready to bring it forward with, so we'll bring that back next time, if it's rezoned.
Sale pending the rezone?
No, they own, they own it already.
So, Patsy, this previously was SF2, which it's out, quite a ways out in the country. How did, how did it get from agriculture of SF2?
If you remember, Tom Turner Manella brought in several phases of Grand Valley when this all was laid out in single-family, and all of it was single-family at that time.
And so what's our land use map?
Our land use shows low-density residential.
So this will be a deviation from our land use map?
This is on the, you know, low to medium is what an SF4 is. Eight units has put you on the very top edge or kind of the edge of the medium, it's kind of an in-between. Being backed up to the park, when you look at it from a planning standpoint, if you're going to increase the density in that area, you increase it around those kind of things. So that's, that's part of.
Where's the park at?
The park's just to the, you know, it, it borders this property.
Is it top of this picture north?
Yeah, the park, yeah, those are the soccer fields right to the north of it.
Oh, okay.
And then it has that drainage area that's through there, so. But there was many acres laid out as part of Grand Valley and Grand Valley Meadows and there was all kinds of phases and as you'll remember, very little of it was developed after that was all laid out. And some of it has gone back and.
When was this before the planning commission?
The original or this?
This.
The rezoning came up at the last meeting last week.
Last week?
Right.
And were all these people at the planning commission?
There were a few people. The adjacent property owners were notified, that's all they're required to notify. So not everyone in the subdivision was notified at that time. There, it was a sign put on the piece, on the property as usual and a notice in the newspaper.
And then what was the discussion and vote at the planning commission?
We had the same discussions, but most of the discussions was about the flooding issues, the, the congestion issues. You know, this developer will be required to do their half of the street. I don't remember what the vote is. I believe it was unanimous, but I, I wouldn't tell you that without having to go look for it to see.
It says that and I noticed that it was.
Okay. That it was unanimous, right. Now, you, you remember, as we go through the process, the next step is that preliminary plat. They will have to improve Hilton Road. They're half of the street, the full width of that piece of property. So you do get it widened out on that side as it moves forward. We've got little pieces of it, there's a little gap in there that wasn't part of either one of those subdivisions that we may have to work something out on that one.
How many units per acre can they put in on SF2?
Four, four units per acre, single-family only.
So why not leave it SF2 if they're gonna go ahead and go with, they want less than four units per acre?
Well, you can't do duplexes. SF2, you can't do duplexes. So they have to go to a new zoning classification. They can go to MF2, which is duplexes only, but it's a larger lot size. They are asking to do MF4, which allows single-family, duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes, and the lot size for duplexes is what they're asking for. Yeah. Yeah. Right.
Fifteen hundred square foot less lot size.
Twelve thousand, twelve thousand square feet for a duplex minimum in a, in a two and two thousand five hundred.
Yeah.
I don't really see the argument here for, for multifamily. Typically, the argument I hear for multifamily is buffer.
Yeah.
And what are we buffering from? A park?
The park.
That doesn't make sense to me to buffer from a park.
Well.
Keep single families and.
What's, what's the reasoning here to think that this should be MF4 as opposed to SF2?
Keep single families with dogs from going to the park.
What?
Well, one, one of the things that, that we look at is providing a variety of housing types. And what an MF4 does is allow you to create a variety of housing types. It doesn't say it all has to be duplexes, it all has to be single-family, it all has to be townhomes, it could be a mixture. In some cases, that, that, you know, mixture and variety of housing types, Springdale doesn't have a lot of mixture in housing types. So looking for areas where that could happen is, and, and the developer comes in and that's what he asked for.
But coming, coming here, it sounds like it's gonna be all duplexes, because that's all we've heard. We didn't hear a multiple.
Basically, that's what he's telling you the subdivision preliminary plat is, but it's not been approved yet. You still have the option to rezone it to an MF4 and that variety still exists. Until we get a preliminary plat, do we know that it's gone specifically to SF2?
Patsy, was a pud discussed at all? They're not my favorites, as you know.
Yeah.
But was that discussed at all as an option for this area to protect their property values?
That's always discussed with the developer, the developer has to be willing to do that. Right.
So he, so what I'm understanding is that this whole area, they want to put duplexes on. Other acres that he owns, he wants to put.
That's correct. Yeah, he's asking for an MF4 that it gives the, the flexibility to have all of those, you know, you've heard me say hundreds of times.
Is there some reason why this is more appropriate for MF4 than the other part?
He want, well, they want to do a different housing type on a smaller lot. The only way you can do a different housing type in this area is to go to a different zoning classification. MF4 gives you that flexibility to have a smaller lot. They could, they could rezone it to MF4 and do all single-family homes and have smaller lots for that too. The developer and the owner of the property is determining that there is a need for a variety of housing types and this is the type they want to provide. I mean, I have to let them come forward with this kind of stuff, you all know that.
Does the commons ring a bell?
Well.
Well.
But the commons was a pud that got changed.
Back to the single-family because we had to have the, we had to have the pud in there with the tiny little houses.
Well, we're not asking for a pud on this one.
I understand.
They're asking for a straight-out rezoning.
But the arguments run the same as they did twenty years ago.
But there are puds in Springdale that work very well, too.
One or two.
There are several that work very well, yes.
We know how many square feet we're looking at on these, and I hate to even ask the developer that question.
There is, there is no minimum square footage, except for the lot size itself. If they can meet the minimum lot size and meet the setbacks, the size of the structure is not something we have a standard for.
Well, the reason I'm asking is, this, this is kind of similar to, similar to some of the discussion we had about the Ramsey subdivision, same developer up by, on Ball Road. And my point that night was, construction prices are through the roof right now. Somebody to go in and build duplexes, we're not talking about multi-family apartment complex, but the Brooklyn, what Brian was saying, Brooklyn and Olivia Circle there, I lived over there on Olivia Circle and there was nothing wrong with that subdivision at all. Part of them were similar to what he's describing, where you drive in and there are duplexes there, but they were, they were nice duplexes and then we lived right around the corner there. And with construction prices being as high as they are right now, I, I don't think we're looking at a situation where we're looking at a five hundred dollar a month rent on, on something. Probably, you're probably looking at, and I'm just guessing here, you're probably looking at something more along the lines of fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred dollars a month in rent. And I may be wrong and that's why I was asking if the developer may have some insight into that, but I don't think what we're looking at with the price of land right now and the price of building per square foot, you're gonna get into a very low-income situation.
Well, can I just remind us all of one thing we've been told forever? That we are not to consider the financial responsibility of the developers and so forth, it is the planning and the property values and the things that, that are most suitable for neighborhoods.
That's, that's true, but I mean, we are talking about property values around the area too, so I'm just saying that the property value of this, I think, would stay relatively high. That's just an assumption on my part and, and the developer has no responsibility to disclose any of that information.
We've also been concerned about adhering to our, our, our planning map and when you look at an area that's been, been rezoned, been rezoned originally to a single-family, that's what most folks are anticipating is going to go in there. So I can really understand why people think they're getting a short shift when, when the car, when the deck gets stacked against them with the new ballgame.
I agree with what Steve made a comment earlier about consistency, how we see the layouts of the homes around there, around our park, a beautiful park, consistent around the park. I know that that's going to be developed, I think everybody in this room knows it's gonna be developed, but I think we need to adhere to a sense of consistency around there to protect the people who are to live there, protect our park, to make it as stable, possible to keep it the same.
Kobe, to answer your, to answer your question, I texted that it's fifteen hundred minimum per side and they're expecting rents at twelve fifty to thirteen hundred is what they're expecting, so.
And I real quickly want to mention that on the other side of the park that got duplexes, okay, I really don't want any more, okay, but on the other side of the park, on the east side of it, and today we was at the park and I can see all the duplexes from the park when the, well, trees are empty basically, but they do have duplexes over there, I'm not sure who's building them, duplexes with single-family mixed together also. But there are duplexes over there and they, but they're all done with siding, they're not even done with brick. So I don't know how that's gonna look after overtime, but that's what they're building right now over there.
Well, that's pretty consistent then. If they added duplexes there, then that would be consistent with what's around them, correct? Thank you. I'd like everybody to.
What you give for speaking up?
If you drop to the duplexes she's speaking of, you can see the, the inconsistency with how that looks. If you drive down Don Tyson and you go through the roundabout at Hilton, she's talking about go, keep going east past the park, they've started duplexes and it does not match the area. It actually is, it's poorly done.
Have, have you or anyone else looked at the, other duplexes that like are, that are on Brooklyn over by Harbor?
All due respect, I don't think we're concerned with the appearance of the duplex as far as whether it's brick or siding, it's not consistent with, and it's, they could make it, they could put gold mailboxes on them, it's still gonna, it's gonna affect the value of the homes in the area, period.
And how, how do we know what effect it has on the value of the home, I'm asking?
We, we hear that argument anywhere anybody wants to do this. And, and it does, you know, it, it, it doesn't always pan out that way and many times it doesn't pan out that way. And it depends on the quality of what's built. I think the rent will drive a whole lot and determine how, how this, you know, people are looking and it's not, people are looking for smaller, smaller homes, if the quality's there, they're looking for smaller lots. We're, we're building, I mean, we, Mike mentioned puds earlier, we've got a pud out by Shaw Park that is being built specifically, I mean, they're gonna be expensive homes, but on very small lots. So, but a pud, pud's different anyway. I, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying, I'm just trying not to paint everything with the same brush here.
Yeah.
Because, because everywhere, somebody wants to put duplexes and certainly everywhere somebody wants to put multifamily, we hear the same arguments.
I, I don't think, I don't think we're here trying to keep anybody from having access to affordable housing, that's not what this is about. The concern is the city's infrastructure here, for one, like we've all said, you're putting a multifamily resident, or a multifamily development essentially on a dead-end street. There's only one way those folks are gonna go west, and that's through our subdivision. The infrastructure is, that road is not suited for that. I can, I can promise you that, so.
I, I agree with that concern. I'm, I'm trying to keep the concerns what I believe are.
So I'll just, I just recently, we, we purchased our house in February, so I did a lot of house shopping the previous eight months. We bought a two thousand, twenty-one hundred square foot house in, in the subdivision. We looked at a twenty-two hundred square foot house north in Springdale and it, it was a subdivision that was surrounded by duplexes. And that twenty, that was twen, we bought twenty-one hundred, that was twenty-two hundred, excuse me. And it was thirty, it was two oh five, we paid two forty, so it was thirty-five thousand dollars cheaper. And it was a year older, but if anything, it should've been, the value should've gone up. So I, that's, I know that's a small picture, that's, that's a small example, but it is an example of home values affected by multifamily.
I have a, I have a question. There's a problem on your street with traffic as, as it is, right?
Yes.
And some of you voiced that, you've brought that concern to people at the city level, I'm not sure, what, has, has it ever been put on the traffic committee to get the speed bumps placed?
Yeah, we were told that we couldn't have them.
May I ask who you spoke with?
Chris, Chris Geringer, I spoke with Eric at the Public Works. And also at that time, there's also a lady that was working there, they both came to the front to talk to me. And I mentioned speed bumps and things, they said, "Oh, that's never gonna happen" because we, we've pledged them to the planning commission, whatever they said before to many, many subdivisions, many housing areas, and it always says no. So unless you really got tons of traffic or something, you think you're, whatever, but it's not gonna happen probably.
And I know somebody else mentioned gates to keep people off of the road. What, has anybody looked into that on?
We all talked about it, but I figured the expense would be expensive for us to all pay for.
Well, close public streets.
Can't.
Oh, you can't, if, in a subdivision, you can't make it a gated.
gated communities are, they're a different animal.
Private drives.
I see, I see, okay, okay.
So I'm, I'm, I know it's creeping up on an hour of discussion on this, so I, I, my, I asked the council to, if it's at all possible to table this, maybe give the developer time to come back with some proposals on what he plans to do with infrastructure. Mainly, the flooding, yes, I know that, I, I'm in construction, I know they have to do something with the water, I get that, with the utilities, I, I get all that. But the street aspect of the infrastructure is what I'm most interested in, what they plan, because honestly, they care about. care about, they care about water, they care about sewer, they care about storm drainage, but I don't think they care how it affect, the, the street aspect of the infrastructure affects surrounding homes. So I'd be interested, I know they're going to put new pavement down, that's not what I'm talking about.
Let me just, and, and I understand your point.
Right.
And, and I, I tend to agree with you, I think, I think the concern on the, on putting more people in there with the infrastructure we've got now, that, that gives me a little heartburn too.
I couldn't imagine if there was a natural disaster after they develop.
But we're talking about a rezoning here, and on a rezoning, I mean, you've gotten more information from the developer on a rezoning than.
Sure.
Than they have to give you.
Yeah.
You know, because we're not supposed to really consider any of that stuff on a rezoning. We're, we're considering the land use, the, you know, and, and, and so, I, I'm not sure, it's reasonable what you're asking, but I'm not sure how practically it would work.
That's not the question for us.
On the, on the home values on Brooklyn, I just looked it up, and on Olivia Circle where I lived, and it, it's very similar, I think what they're proposing is similar to that. There's a house for sale for 119 a square foot, and one just sold for 117. I've got a house in Harbor for sale for 118, and this is right across the street from Harbor Meadows. And I think, just, I think knowing what the target is in that area, I don't think it's going to be something, adversely affect the property values.
Have you looked at the home values in Butterfly, on Butterfly?
No, I just looked up.
They're north of that.
The, one similar, that they were saying that they would be building.
When we first bought, they were somewhere close to that, they've actually gone up, but that's not considering this. So, like, I, I get your, I get the city's, or the council's, you know, comments about that, but it's more ti, I would say it's more times than not that it does negatively affect home values. I know it doesn't do it every time, but more times than not. My, my concern is, like I said, the, the consistency, this just doesn't fit. That's, if, if I'm building the city, that's, I mean, I think that's, that is a huge thing to consider.
Thank you. Anybody else? I want to thank everyone for the points you've made and the way you've tried to keep it as, as little repetition as possible. Come ahead, come ahead, you bet.
I'm not even involved with this subdivision, I live on the west side of town, but the school district, can it hold the new students that would possibly come in? Because I know Springdale schools are busting at the seams.
There's a new, there's a new school that's being built right there.
Elementary school?
Right past the park, and it hasn't even been started yet, but yes, they will be able to account for that.
And that's not going to stop in our school district, I don't know of any school district that's done a better job of keeping up with growth in very challenging situation than in Springdale. But thank you.
There was a mention that the developer may consider a different type of zoning. Is that something that would be an option? I think it'd be.
I mean, if, if you're talking about the MF2 and, and go back to planning commission for variance, I, I don't, I don't see an issue with that at all. I mean, with it, we could do a little traffic study to, to help alleviate your concerns as well. You know, I'm, I'm assuming if it, if it didn't get passed, that we could come back to you and get my, get the SF2 zoning back, but, but if you'd want to downgrade it to an MF2 tonight, I think that would be.
Would that, I, I got a question for Ernest, would that, or Patsy, would that be something we would do, or would we just, we, we could do it and then it would go back to planning commission? How would that work?
No, I mean, you, if you consider an MF2 a downgrade, because it's down to four units per acre, duplexes only, you can do that at the table tonight. That's not any guarantee that they're going to get a variance for all the lots to do a smaller lot size. That's the chance you're taking, Mike.
But there's a motion, second on the floor.
For a?
For Mike, what?
There's a motion, a second on the floor.
For the MF4 as requested.
That's correct.
Need to vote on that motion, or we would need an amendment to that motion, one second? Right?
Who called the motion, I don't think I heard it.
Early on, Rick. And Kathy, you second?
Rick and Kathy, okay.
So, if, if Rick.
It always allows discussion to continue, and that's the reason why.
I understand, I just didn't know who did it.
And in case y'all are wondering, a lot of times we'll get a motion, a second on the table, just so, then, then we've got something really to discuss.
Have to have it for discussion.
So, we could entertain, if, if, if Councilman Evans wanted to amend his motion, if he doesn't, then we'll vote on that motion, and then someone could make another motion, if that one doesn't pass.
Correct.
Ernest, can you do that? If it doesn't pass, then you can downgrade? Or it has to be?
If you can sit aside right now, if it's, if it goes forward with an MF4 request and is denied, he can always repetition for an MF2.
Yeah.
Planning commission.
Well, we can't do it tonight, so we got a motion, a second, on the floor now.
So, if MF4 is denied, he can come back to an MF2?
He could reapply if it doesn't have anything to do with the motion on the floor right now.
No, but if, if you amended the motion to downgrade it to an MF2, at the table you can do that. That's not.
I don't think, I don't think we want to do that, or I don't think.
Before we vote, could I ask out of respect for those that have taken a great deal of time to come and make the effort here, how many are here as a direct result of this particular request? Thank you.
We're ready.
All right. We've got a motion, a second, for the, request is presented. Okay, Denise?
Jay Cox?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
No.
Overton?
No.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
No ma'am.
Evans?
No ma'am.
How?
No.
A vote of?
Two, four, and six against the resounding request.
By the vote, say that.
Six to two, no.
No.
Okay. All right. And thank you all for being here. Brian, thanks, let's see what, you know, we may, we may see you again in a, with a different request, it looks like. So, thank you all very much.
And I have somebody's.
Now, you don't have to all leave, there's a lot of interesting stuff going on.
Anybody want the pictures back?
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, where are we?
All right.
Ready to move on?
We're ready to move on, Patsy.
Okay.
We've been on that one a while.
Yeah. The next request is to rezone property located at 7537 Brooklyn Avenue. It is a request to rezonate from an MF3 zone to a, our SF2 dis, zone. It is a house on the edge of the, the zoning classifications where duplexes are allowed to the east, and this is a single-family home, and they are requesting it be brought down to an SF2. Planning commission recommends approval of this title of the ordinance, reason ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from low, medium-density duplex district MF3 to low, medium-density, single-family residential district SF2 and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further comment or questions on this one? Anyone in the audience on this one? All right, Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
How?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes. Second.
Watson?
I, I really doubt if this is an emergency.
Was, was this an error years ago? Is this that same property?
No, I think it's a refinancing issue that they're trying to do it, and it puts a cloud on the, if it's an.
There's something pending that they needed done.
Yes, that's, that's why we're asking, that's why they went through the, through the process of having it rezoned to an SF3.
All right, then I'll vote yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
How?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
We do vet those issues before they get here, okay?
The next one is a request to re, to rezone 1.46 acres located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Elm Springs Road and 40th Street. The request is to rezonate the property from A1 to general commercial district C2. Planning commission recommends approval of the rezoning request, title of the ordinance, reason ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to general commercial district C2 and declaring an emergency.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes. Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
About the ordinance emergency clause, carry eight zero.
And we do have a large-scale development for that corner, so I know it's ready to move on. Okay. The next two are the ordinances that were brought about after the council overturned the planning commission's decision. The first one is an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from neighborhood office district O1 to general commercial district C2, declaring an emergency, and this is for the property located at 811 South Turner.
Pass. Okay, we have a second. Any further questions or comments? Anyone?
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
How?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Second.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
How?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
And the next one is to allow the conditional use for the mobile manufactured home to be placed on an A1 with the condition that a permanent ingress, egress to the tract be obtained, submitted to the city attorney for verification prior to the permitting of the manufactured home installation. Planning, that title of the ordinance resolution reads, a resolution approving conditional use for Beatrice Frere and Manola Juarez at parcel 2100167123 in Benton County, Arkansas, set forth in ordinance number 4030.
Second.
Has there been any movement? Have you heard anything?
Haven't seen anything yet.
But the conditions for access and all the other conditions must be met.
Right. Before that can be placed there.
I know we've had this discussion, but I just want to make it.
Right.
Very clear that that's what we're agreed to at the meeting.
And typically, we don't, it's not allowed if the access isn't already there, and so the.
My concern really is that, Mike, how, how are we going to, we, the city is going to know that the, all the conditions.
Or not.
Have been met prior to.
Well, they're going to have to submit an easement document that Ernest is going to verify that it is valid to give them access to that piece of property before they get a permit to, to put the manufactured home there. Can't be hooked up to water, septic system can't be put in until we get that established.
Remember, if the condition use is approved, it's a condition used to be revoked, so they can't prove the condition.
Yeah.
And the things, it's a small project compared to everything else, those are the easy ones that slip through the cracks, which is why I was asking that question.
All right.
Well, should we, should we table that until they get it then? Instead of.
We had this discussion two weeks ago.
Right. We decided to go ahead and give them the condition.
But I thought they were saying that they would have it. That's done.
Thought they might, but.
They said they had, they had a letter or a, a email from the highway department saying that that was possible, maybe.
They just said that they had been contacted.
Yeah.
And that's as much as.
So we don't know anymore.
We don't know if the permit application's been submitted yet, none of us has seen it.
At that time, it was not submitted at all.
Yeah, and I haven't seen anything, I don't know if they have or not.
I, I think we've got enough safeguards if they can't get a, system in, and they can't, I mean, they can't live there if we don't.
We can, you know, the note can be made you can't hook up water service, and that's usually how we control things, with water, you know, or power, so.
Well, we do have a motion, a second. We're going to know one way or another.
I was just asking for reassurances.
I mean, it'll happen either way, but I, I thought what was said last week was, they were working on it, should have had it last night at the meeting, she, she, she did lead us to believe they were very close.
That's, that my assumption was she was going to have it tonight, and then we were just going to.
Yeah.
And it was worded this way so that what she had said, that they didn't have to go through the whole.
Right.
Process again, so. So are we to believe that?
I didn't, if, if we're waiting on RDOT and those approvals, I knew not to take that, not to put too much stock in we'll have it by next meeting, you know, because those approvals can get hung up, they can take time, there's a lot to.
And how long does it take, or how, how long do we give them to get all of these conditions met?
No time limit.
There isn't a time limit, just any time?
But you said this could be revoked?
Could be revoked.
If the conditional use is granted, if they violate any of the terms of the conditional use, ordinance has a provision, a procedure whereby a condition is going to be revoked.
You had a good point. Is there a timeframe? Because this, this will be tied up for a very long time for the neighborhoods or the neighborhood, if there's not a timeframe. I asked this.
Do it, it stays like it is.
Well, yeah, but, but the reason I ask, Mary, is because even before I sat on the council, there was a piece of property by me that had been approved 10 years before, and then all of a sudden it came back, and nobody knew what the approval was, what it was for, because there had been no time limit. So, there's probably not a bad plan to give them X, a year, whatever it takes. How long can it take to get approval? If you're really working at it? Asking.
Could we, could we do that, Ernest? Just like right at the end of the now, therefore clause, but.
I don't know if the applicant's here, if they're willing to.
Well, we could do it ourselves.
Welcome, welcome. Well, it's a big deal, we table it till next.
Do they have to get their verification for, I mean, they have to get their ingress and egress within a year? Is that what you're thinking?
That's what I'm thinking.
Seems fair to me.
So, do we have to have them present and?
No.
No.
That's our decision. You've just added another condition to the conditional use, did you ever make the motion? We need to amend the motion.
They would need to amend the motion.
Or a year?
Or a year, time limit.
Can you just come up with the language for that, Ernest?
If all conditions are not met within a year, or if egress is not which?
Just all conditions if, because that biggest condition was access.
Yeah.
Then the condition is, is expired, I guess.
All right, who seconded? And you're good with that amendment?
I am.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second with that amendment. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Howe?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes, since we made the change.
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Pacific.
All right. Item ten, ordinance committee report, Chairman Mike Overton. Mike?
Mayor, we had one ordinance come forward, the ordinance committee, and passed forward to the council recommendation for approval. It's an ordinance creating chapter one hundred, the code of ordinances of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, to implement the Small Wireless Facility Deployment Act, Act nine ninety-nine of two thousand nineteen, codified at Arkansas Code annotated twenty-three dash seventeen dash five oh one and for other purposes. And the city attorney can, uh, explain it further, uh, about some of these, uh, wireless, uh, poles have been popping up over the city, and this at least gives us somewhat, uh, an idea of where they're going in.
This implements, uh, a law that was enacted by the Arkansas General Assembly during the legislative session and signed into law by the governor. This has been vetted through, uh, the, uh, industrial industry as well. Feedback from them. It does, uh, set the permitting requirements, uh, location, certain location requirements is set forth. Basically verbatim, what the state legislature has put into the statute that when we begin implementing it's going to... Goes into effect. If it's passed, it would go into effect ninety days from tonight.
I'll move the ordinance pass.
There's a motion? And a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone in the audience need to speak to this issue?
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Howe?
Yes.
All right. Item eleven, health sanit, health and sanitation committee, Chairman Brian Powell. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. Our last committee meeting, we... Ordinance ordering derazing, demolition, and removal of certain residential structure within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, located at two zero five zero dot avenue. There are emergencies got on here and other purposes and... Approval. I've got Tom up here, he's gonna explain where we're at for the...
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for hearing my request. Um, I was gonna send a few pictures, I didn't, committee sent any pictures, and then I just have a few brief ones that you have an example. This first two is just of the garage that exists up there on the property at twenty fifty dot. And I don't believe the property owners are here. And just for the first people listening at home and watching here, again, this property was, started to be rehabbed back in thirteen. It was, you know, finished and had a C of O on it. The pool in the garage was permitted around the same time, which has never been finished. Since then, things have happened and house is back to basically a shell. Pool, garage never finished. Communication has essentially broken down, and I haven't had any communication with the owner since approximately June twentieth of eighteen. So here's the second one, this will be about the pool.
Please, recommendation.
Um, you might explain what the C of O was.
The C of O happened, like I said, they rehabbed this house, and this was a house maybe built in the sixties, I'm not sure, but, um, it was fairly modern home back in the day and...
But explain what a certi...
A C of O was certificate of occupancy. The house was rehabbed, completed, completely redone with heating and air, electrical, plumbing, you know, it was a ready-to-go project, so I just don't believe they ever lived in it.
I'll move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions?
Um, I'd just like to point out that we take these raising of properties very seriously and
Yes, sir.
and I don't want it to be suggested by our shortness of questions tonight that we're not taking this one serious, because we've had, uh, this prior, uh, much conversation on this one at the prior committee meeting that lasted much longer than this, and there was many questions asked and, and explained to us by you at that committee meeting.
Yes, sir.
For the record, a letter was sent to the property owner on October third advising them of the date of the committee meeting and this being tonight, and they did sign the, uh, sign for the letter, so they'll receive it.
They did not respond to the letter, Ernest?
I have no more communication. And this was the picture that I provided last week, which is a view from the trails, 'cause that's as close as I've gotten to it since then, which, as you've seen the house go by, it was all boarded up. Now they've taken all the boarding off, so I'm assuming it's just open to public, animals, whatever.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I'll ask Denise to call a roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Howe?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Do the emergency clause pass?
Second.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Howe?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Emergency clause carry eight zero.
All right. Thank you, council.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Item twelve, finance committee report, Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as we do every year, the finance committee, uh, met, uh, beginning, I believe, the first part of November, and we've, uh, to just, to consider the proposed budget for two thousand, I mean, twenty twenty. And, uh, we met, I believe, at least on four different occasions, um, most recent being last week. Throughout that process, uh, there were several amendments made to the proposed budget. Most of those amendments are reflected in our packet with, uh, attached documents. I'll first go ahead, this is found at page, uh, where was it? Anyway, I'll first go ahead and read the title to the resolution. Title to the resolution is a resolution approving the city of Springdale, Arkansas budget for the year twenty twenty. That, uh, resolution was considered at the last meeting and was forwarded to council tonight without recommendation, assuming there would be additional, uh, discussion. Only thing that I would add to that is that, uh, at that most recent meeting, there were, as I recall, at least two changes made to the budget. One of those changes is reflected in the actual resolution that talks about the, um, additional funding for Ozark Regional Transit of eighty-two thousand. The other amendment that was made at the most recent meeting was, um, a reduction of the transfer of funds from CIP to the general fund as reflected in the, uh... On page fifty-eight of our packet, um, on page seven of the budget packet, shows a transfer of three million dollars. At the most recent, uh, committee meeting, we voted to reduce that amount to two million. And I'm not sure where that's reflected anywhere in the paperwork we have tonight. Do you know if it is, Wyman? I'm sorry?
Page sixty-three.
Page sixty-three?
So those, that change has been made, Laura? Okay.
Sixty-three and sixty-five.
It's sideways.
Okay. Thank you, I see it now. So again, there was forwarded to council without recommendation.
I'll move the resolution pass. If we don't do that, we don't even get to discuss.
As presented tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. I know that there was some discussion about the O R T and I, I don't know, I wanna give everybody an ample opportunity to discuss that before I call for a vote.
Mayor, I would, I would like to, uh, make a comment on the, uh, the budget. We discussed in our committee meeting that there was a two million dollar deficit, um, but out of that same meeting, we asked historically, what percentage of our budget do we spend? And we tend to budget high side. If, if we were to spend ninety-five percent of this proposed budget, we would actually be under budget. If we, uh, went to the ninety percent, which we've done before, we would actually be under budget by two point two million. So even though there is a two million dollar budget deficit, it's because we're, the way we budget is being extra cautious on that. The one request I would have is in the CIP, um, if we could possibly going forward, and I know this is a little ancillary of the budget, but to have some, a little more clarity in our CIP reports, it's, you have to, you have to go back a month to find out how much is actually going in on that report. And, uh, I think we also ought to designate on the CIP report, uh, that million dollars, uh, so that, like this year in September and October, I believe it was, or October, November, all of a sudden, there was a minus five hundred thousand dollars, and then the, the next month was another million. And I think if we can go ahead and designate that money in the CIP so that it's not something that we're con, we're, we're already taking it out of the undesignated, and that way, we don't think we have that kind of money to spend during the whole year. In September, October, it gets pulled out. I don't know if we can do that, but I, I think that would really help, at least me.
I think that's a great idea. The only question I've got, if we show it from the beginning of the year and then we don't use it, how do we? And it's just a matter of how we show it. I mean, it's not, you know...
Wouldn't it be similar to, like the, the, like we talked about the library, there was shelving that they never used?
Exactly, we just move it back.
Move it right back.
Yeah, but we, do we wait till the end of the year to move it back? Knowing, e- even if we know we're way ahead of things, if, you know, if, let's say we do have a great year, and, and we, we know early on that we're, we're going to be able to not use all of it. Let's just play that game. I guess we could reevaluate it as throughout the year. Okay. That'll work.
Cause we, we should have about two point two five, I believe, number thirty-first, so we could, even if we wanted to take the first step of saying, okay, we're gonna go ahead and put a million into the designated, uh, and then maybe let it grow and...
There was something, y'all helped me remember, Wyman may remember, 'cause we talked about something, may, may not have been this, talked about showing something quarterly, or not showing it quarterly, but count, accounting for it quarterly. Do you remember what that was? We were talking about?
Yeah, he was talking about putting one twelfth of the
Okay.
per month into the, uh, report to show the, uh, actual transfers. So that's what, that's what Wyman had mentioned at the committee meeting.
I also like the suggestion, Wyman, on our, on our CIP reports, and we may wanna do some other things, too. We, we may wanna look at a lot of how we, just how we list things, but I think when we do that report, if we'll show, we should be able to show how much sales tax or how much has been added to the unreserved. Instead of having to go back and look at last month's report and look at the difference in the unreserved, that shouldn't be a problem, should it? Just to be able to show how much monthly was added to the, to CIP? Okay. We may have some other suggestions. That, those may be, we may have a lot of good discussions and whether y'all wanna do it at the first committee meeting of the year, or, you know, when, when you organize the committees, or however, you know, we, we may have, we're, we're certainly open to suggestions about anything that makes this process simpler, easier to understand, and easier to follow. So...
Can we clarify also, Jeff? I think you suggested that the million that we don't take out of CIP, you were suggesting it come out of one of two funds. I just wanted to clarify.
Transferring two million, Kobe.
But the third, if we need it, would come from where?
Come from the...
General fund, the four point five million dollar carryover that we have in the general fund.
Yeah.
Are we, are we, are we good?
I don't think we have to designate that, 'cause that's just basically what would happen.
Routine, yeah.
We don't.
That's just operating.
Any other questions? Because we've got the motion and a second. Well, we could, we could do that, and that's a good, you know, we, you and I mentioned, we discussed that a little bit. We could do that even if this is passed the way it is. We could still come back and take that and, and stop the free if partway through the year, it wasn't accomplishing what, what we'd hoped it would. That would save changing the motion. You get a ridership report, but it would be good, we, we'd need to be able to compare it. You get a monthly report from Jeff at O R T. We just, I think we just need to evaluate that and see if it's accomplishing what.
They'd be expecting it for a full year, though? Soon and decide to pull it.
Yeah, but if you don't, I mean, plug on that whenever you want it to.
I say that like, I say that like it would be easy to do. Yeah.
Well, they just changed, they, they stopped their free, if we stop paying for it, supplementing it, then they stop their free ride.
Maybe we can notify him and let him know that that's what we're wanting to do, correct?
Evaluate it as a year progressed.
For those that are watching, I'm one of them, I missed the committee meeting, could someone explain the free ride concept, please?
Fair free, uh...
Free rides for Ozark Regional Transit.
For all, for all routes?
Yep.
Yes.
Cause it's eighty-two thousand was for, give the drivers a dollar an hour raise plus free rides for everybody.
The eighty, of, do you remember the breakdown? Of the eighty-two, about thirty-something
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-six, I think.
Was to bring the drivers up to
Or thirty-eight.
Up to a competitive wage. The remainder of that was for the free fare option.
And, uh...
Reason he brought that to us was because both Fayetteville and Rogers are going, are gonna, are gonna do that.
What about the popcorn and cotton candy? Where's that coming?
Well, it's... So, anyway, that's, that's why we were discussing.
My question was, to generate revenues, how do you do that if you offer free fares?
Well, his rationale
So we're, that, that money is to subsidize this
Well, and...
His rationale was, you don't pay to walk on the sidewalk, so therefore, you shouldn't pay to ride the Ozark Regional Transit.
Well, I'm not opposed to transit at all. I think it's a necessary part of what we need within our city. I'm just trying to be clear on what the free fare conversation was.
I don't think the fares, I don't, I may be speaking out of turn here, uh, but I don't think the fares are, are the real driver in their sustainability. I think, I think there are
They've never been able to generate any income.
I think there are federal funds that, that come into play and other grants and funds that come into play.
And I agree with you. I just didn't understand
Right.
like many that are watching, what the free fare concept and subsidy is all about.
This is a, this is an eligible expense, uh, with state turnback, and, uh, and Brad has adjusted his budget if you all approve this. And, uh, and again, it can be changed. It can be stopped.
And I think, Kathy, that...
How do we distribute the money? Don't we do it in one lump sum? You don't do it monthly, do you? How's it, uh, Laura, do you know how it's?
I'm not sure on the fair free, how we would do it.
No, no, I'm talking about the funds to Ozark Regional Transit. Don't we just write them the check the first of the year?
We do that in monthly installments. We do it all right up front, don't we?
It's up front, I think.
I think we do, but we, nothing says we would have to.
Once it's gone, you can't, you're gonna claw it back.
Nothing says we would have to. If y'all want to, if y'all wanna put a, if y'all wanna do that in quarterly installments, or, then we could evaluate better whether we wanna continue the, the fair free or not.
But just to be clear, the eighty-two thousand that we're talking about, which is state turnback money, could be used for sidewalks, streets, and a whole lot of other stuff, not necessarily has to be O R T. And I think there is a whole lot of people that benefit from streets and sidewalks as to a few thousand riders.
Kathy?
Yes.
I think you weren't there. Um, some of the discussion was that it gets, um, people to locations where they can shop in our stores and get to work, um, where they can, you know, bring that revenue in.
No, I understand that part of me, and thank you. It was the free fare concept that I was unclear about.
There, there is definitely a payback to the city by folks being able to get to shop, get to shopping, get to work. Uh, anytime you take cars off the road, you're, you're benefiting our, now, I don't know, in, in our numbers, you're probably not making a big difference, but we're trying to grow a transit system regionally, and, uh, and I think this is a
First step, but I think your idea about
Reasonable, reasonable.
Quarterly payments and quarterly, uh, reports is not a bad idea as we kind of evaluate the, um, program itself.
If it doesn't grow ridership, then I don't know, I'm assuming that's the goal here.
I would assume that, too.
And as these routes cross the city line, af, as they're coming from Fayetteville to Springdale, there's...
And I, and Brian, I think, if, if I've heard the council, right, everyone seemed, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but everyone seemed to not have a big problem with... correct me if I'm wrong, but everyone seemed to not have a big problem with the 30 whatever for the, for bringing the drivers up to, up to salaries so they can compete, because they're losing, they're having trouble keeping drivers. I think, we'll talk about 82,000, but I think we're really talking about 40 something thousand, or, maybe in low 50s. Anybody have that figure in front of them? How much for the ride, the fair free ride we're talking about?
I thought it was drivers and mechanic.
44.
And then the fair free, I, I thought the fair free was the lower end.
We're talking about 44,000 of the turnback money that, that we seem to have more of a, a little more heartache over, heartburn.
And I think, again, I think transit's an important piece of the transportation system within this entire, not only our city, but our region. I, I still think that the idea is, is worth exploring, and if quarterly payments and quarterly reports will give us a better idea as we spend the money, I think that is an investment.
But we really don't know anything about their budgeting, or how they were figuring on getting their money and all, and do we really?
We could do the fair free, Mike, in court, in quarterly reports.
Yeah, that, but as far as the.
That take an amendment to the motion? Would someone, if someone wants to make that motion, we would, we would distribute the, the additional, well, you can distribute the additional 82,000 if you wanted to, quarterly.
With quarterly reports.
Be $2,050 a quarter. Or 2,000, no, be, it'd be $20,500 per quarter.
There's a zero.
You know, a zero can make a lot of different decisions.
Well, I'm going to make that motion.
Now, is that?
We, we're going to have to amend the motion that was made.
Well, that's what I meant, the amendment to, to make that motion.
You made the motion pass, okay.
For quarterly payments, along with quarterly reports.
Is that, everybody clear?
If, if this is passed just as it is, will it come back to us next year?
Yes, we, we have to reconsider. We reconsider, it's, the, the contribution to ORT is budgeted every year.
Okay.
So it's, y'all consider that every year.
Now, we're going to consider it every quarter.
Well, no.
No, just this portion.
No, all you're going to do is this, you're not going to even consider, reconsider it unless you just decide, we're just spreading the payment out, unless y'all decide to pull the plug on the, on the fair free sometime during the year.
I just, I think maybe one quarter's not going to be enough, and if you look at it one quarter, then, I mean, yeah, I think you need to get more.
My motion was just for this free fare.
For that, for, just for the 44,000.
That was just for the free fare.
That way they can plan, that way they know their.
I mean, it's a lot of money, but it gives.
Are, are we going to get something for that? What's the purpose of doing? Where are we going to get a quarter for that?
The purpose was trying to, to ease some concern that was, was.
Is it worth it, or is it not? And I think it's, I think it's good to have that data, you know, for next year, when we, we look at each quarter, and we can see the growth, and we can take that data and, and apply it to next budget.
We're going to continue to get that every month, anyway. Now, if there's something not on that data that you want to see, we need to let them know. That monthly data.
Quarterly, monthly, quarterly, okay.
I think we get it monthly. I think we get a. Kathy?
It's.
44, just the 44.
Do we know it's 44? Did you find that somewhere, or?
Yes. The free fare is 36?
6990. I actually don't know now if it's worth quarterly payments. I would agree. I'm withdrawing my motion, on my amendment to them, yes.
Plating your motion to approve the.
Budget as presented.
I'm second, yes.
Well, sometimes we talk around a lot.
It's, it's good to kind of talk through, especially if you miss the meetings.
To the same place. But that's how you decide, that's how you think, through things, so that's okay.
And if you miss a meeting, you have lots of questions.
Is there any other comment or questions? All right, Denise?
No.
Ulfar.
Yes.
Lawson.
No, ma'am.
Evans.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Also, the, as part of the budget process, and my computer turned off, we're also required every year to pass an ordinance to set the salaries for elected officials, and that ordinance was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval. The title to that ordinance is an ordinance setting the salaries of the elected officials and planning commission members of Springdale, Arkansas, and repealing ordinance number 5344.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Ulfar.
Yes.
Lawson. Evans. Powell. Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Second.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans. Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Ulfar.
Yes.
Thank you. Item 13, Police and Fire Committee Report, Chairman Amelia Williams. Amelia?
Um, yes, the Police and Fire Committee met, and we have three resolutions and an ordinance. 13A reads, "A resolution authorizing the purchase of computer-aided dispatch system." It was forwarded committee with recommendation for approval. Does anybody want to speak on that, or? Any questions?
Any, okay.
Second.
Motion, a second. We had quite a bit of discussion in committee. Are there any other questions for, for Chief Peters or Chief Irwin? All right, Denise?
Evans. Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Ulfar.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, oh, can I, can I keep going? Do I keep going? Okay. 13B, "A resolution authorizing the purchase of a time and attendance program," was also forwarded to council with a recommendation for approval. If the resolution pass.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further comments or questions? Questions for? Okay.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Ulfar.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Page 18, zero.
13C, "A resolution authorizing the purchase of a secure information storage and management system for the police department," was also forwarded from committee to council with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Denise?
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Ulfar.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans. Powell.
Yes.
And then 13D, "An ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the purchase of a fire station alerting system and for other purchases." We forwarded that to council with a recommendation for approval.
Motion, a second, to approve the ordinance.
One question?
Yes.
My question was just, what is a fire station alerting system?
Come on, Chief.
If you could explain why we're, why we're not doing the bidding.
Folks that might want to hear that also.
Good question. Basically, what it is, is the digital radios that we've gone to do not transmit a tone any longer, so we have to use a different type of system. We currently are using an analog system to do that, but when we move over to the new radios, we're trying to get the vote, the IP system set up, and that's what this does.
And didn't you say at dispatch that they would be able to, as soon as they put the address in?
That's correct.
That it sends the.
It's an automatic, right.
Automatic tone that's sent. I think that's valuable.
Less human error possibilities, less stress on the dispatchers.
We hope.
We hope, yeah, okay.
Chief, could you elaborate on the wave competitive bidding?
Yeah, basically, this is the only company that currently provides this type of service, so that's why we're asking to waive competitive bidding.
Okay, any other questions? Denise?
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Ulfar. Lawson. Evans. Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Second. And that closes Police and Fire.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Ulfar.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans. Powell. Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Page 18, emergency clause, carry eight, zero.
And that concludes.
Thank you. Item 14, and I want to turn that over to our city attorney, Ernest.
Thank you. This is an ordinance authorizing a city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the property located within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, 307 South Cleveland Street.
The ordinance pass.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Does anyone need to speak to that property? Anyone here? Any other questions, council? Okay, Denise?
Overton.
Yes.
Ulfar.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Second.
Ulfar. Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell. Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
All right, we'll go ahead and move to item 15, since I put the, since we've put the added resolution at item 16. So I would entertain a motion to forego committee meeting on December 16th, and city council meeting on December 24th. Got a better way to spend my Christmas Eve, and I hope you all do, too.
No one I'd rather spend it with more than you guys.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans. Powell. Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Ulfar.
Eight, zero.
Not yet. You do have a resolution before you, that hard copy.
They moved to adjourn.
To approve the paying of the bill that exceeds a million dollars. 1.448, that's for the, out of the 2018 construction bond for, that's the criminal justice, isn't it, Wyman? Okay. Yeah, let me, let me read it. This is a "Resolution Authorizing Payment of an Invoice, Project Number 18BPC1."
Resolution pass.
Thank you, Kathy. Got a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Evans. Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.